I am calling this meeting to order. This is the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, held on Tuesday, November 19th, commencing at 4:30 PM. Council members in attendance are Council President Kritzer, Council Member Stewart, Council Vice President Forsythe, Council Member Noeva Kamina, Council Member Anderson and myself, Council Member Salahuddin, Council Member Fields is not here, but if he joins, I will announce him. We have 12 items on the agenda, and the first item is the approval of the Public Defense Indigency Screening Agreement. We have Director Carol Helen and Planning and Community Development Human Services Manager Brooke Buckingham. And Deputy Director Sarah Viallan.
Thank you very much, Council Member, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it directly over to Brooke Buckingham, our Human Services Manager.
Good afternoon, Council. As you know, individuals who are charged with a crime and cannot afford an attorney are entitled to legal representation. The city currently contracts with King County Department of Public Defense to provide indigent screening services for Redmond District Court defendants. The Department of Public Defense staffs screen defendants to determine whether they meet the financial income eligibility requirements for public defender services. The city's contract with King County expires at the end of this year, so we are seeking to continue this agreement. Under the new 2024 agreement, King County would charge the city a monthly rate of $305 or about $3, excuse me, $3,660 for the year. This rate was established based on average screening per month and proportionally shared with other participating cities, which includes Shoreline and Kenmore. We are asking that the council authorize the mayor to sign this agreement and that this request be replaced on the December 3rd consent agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you so much. And Council, you'll notice that a lot of these items are not a lot of time allocated, so we're going to try to keep this tight with 12 items on the agenda. With that, are there any questions? Yes, Council Member Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. My question is just on not necessarily the total amount, because it's not a huge amount, but more so the percentage of the increase and looking to see with the percentage of the increase, what, is it just the amount of volume or rates or just to have a very quick understanding of it?
Yes, definitely. So they track average caseload per month and have been doing that for the last few years, and we have seen an increase in the caseload rate, so that's really the biggest reason for the increased cost.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will see this item on the December 3rd consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next item is with Police Chief Daryl Lowe and Police Deputy Chief Brian Coats, who are both online. It's the Master Service and Purchasing Agreement between the City of Redmond and Brink Drones.
All right, thank you. So this here is the contract between, as I said, the Redmond Police Department and Brink Drones for our DFR program. The contract represents a very substantial discount in the first year, first year coming in at $99,000. The subsequent years of the contract, it runs for six years, six years in total to be consistent with our biennium, and the per-year cost after year one is consistent with the budgeted allocation in the upcoming budget. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council Questions, Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thank you. Can you just, for transparency, state how many drones there are total?
So this would be a total of six drones, two for our DFR program, and those are drones in basically a dock. There would be two, what we call patrol drones, so those would be two additional drones that are deployed from a Pelican case from a police car, and then two interior drones, and those would be patrol deployed for specific circumstances when we would need to do an interior check of a location. So six total.
Thank you. And then, are we planning to do any ILAs with other agencies to maybe help recoup some of the cost of these?
Yeah, so I've just started to socialize the concept of regional DFR with some of our surrounding cities, namely Duval, Mercer Island, Clyde Hill, Yarrow Point and Medina. So we are just starting in those conversations, and so I would look to come back to council, probably the latter part of next year, once they have an opportunity to bring that forward to their communities and their council.
Great, thanks. And then, last question. I know we've talked about these being able to be used for like fire and public works. Is there anywhere where that is in writing that we're going to be doing that kind of intercity sharing of these opportunities?
Not a public-facing document, but in the, if you want to call it a vision or draft or what our UAS program looks like, that is one of the pillars. And yes, moving forward, I will get that into a publicly viewable type of document.
Great, thank you.
Council President Kritzer?
Speaking of publicly viewable types of documents, I know we have also looked at the data guidelines for the use of drones as a first responder in other meetings, and then also, you know, with this, I think it would be good in the time ahead for us to create a very easily accessible FAQ for the public about this program and about the guidelines around kind of what it'll do, what it won't do, et cetera. So just something to put on the docket as we do this work and roll it out, since I know I've gotten some questions from the public about it, ongoing and clearly the councils raise some questions as we've talked about adopting this new technology.
Understood, and that's part of the website update that my staff is currently undertaking.
Any other questions from Council? Seeing none, I believe the action is to move this to consent. Any concerns with that? Great, thank you, Chief Lowe. The next item is also with Chief Lowe. It is the Master Service and Purchasing Agreement between the City of Redmond and Axon Enterprise, Inc.
Yeah, so this is the, essentially the continuation of our existing contract with Axon. Axon provides us our body worn cameras, in-car cameras, digital evidence management platform, and interview room recording capabilities. This here is a 10-year contract. This differs from the standard five-year contract that Axon normally does and differs slightly from the six-year contract that we asked them to do, again, to be consistent with our biannual budget cycle. By entering into this 10-year service agreement, it locks in the prices at today's prices. Annually, the price has gone up about 6.5% per year, based on our previous contract renewals. This particular deal or contract will save the city over $2 million over the course of this 10-year contract. It also includes a refresh of the equipment that they provide us at three different times throughout the contract, which is somewhat standard. In this particular case, since it is a 10-year contract, we will get an additional renewal and refresh of equipment. So as technology advances, we will always remain up to date with the most current equipment, and most importantly, we have a price lock. So today's prices will be the same for the next 10 years, irrespective of what happens with the market.
Thank you. Any questions from Council? Council Vice President?
Thanks. The last line on the memo says, "Contract includes a non-appropriation language, allowing the city to opt out without penalty if financially necessary." What triggers that financially necessary? Is that a council deems it no longer necessary, or is that a, "We're in dire straits and we need to cancel the contract"?
Yes and yes, and all of the contracts that I've negotiated on behalf of the City and Police Department, I've made that a provision of it. So if at some point down the road, for the reasons you brought forward, the city needs to opt out of it, we can do that without penalty. And then with the Axon in particular, given that it's 10 years, that for this one, in my opinion, was very important to ensure that we had.
Right, so if a future council decides that this is no longer a priority, they can make that budget decision?
Correct, yes. If funds are no longer appropriated for it, then yes, we have the ability to opt out.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council Member Noeva Kamina?
Not a question, thank you. Not a question, just a quick comment. Thanking you, Chief, for the foresight that you had on this and looking out for us for the next 10 years, taking a look at what, putting us in a strong position to be able to pivot so that we can be prepared rather than predicting. So thank you.
Council President Kritzer?
Just wanted to clarify, so will we pay these costs that are listed here annually?
Yes, so that is the annual breakdown, and so, yes, straight answer, yes.
Great, I was just clarifying that we wouldn't be paying a certain amount of years upfront. So it'd be annually, but it's locked into the 10-year rates. Great, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Great, seeing none. Are there any objections to seeing this on consent on December 3rd? Perfect, thank you, Chief. Our next item on the agenda is also, Chief Lowe, it's the Interlocal Agreement ILA between the City of Redmond and the City of Duval for dispatch services.
Yes, with this, this is just a renewal, excuse me, a renewal and refresh of our existing contract with Duval. We provide them dispatch services. It reflects our current costs to provide that service moving forward.
Questions from Council? Great, I'm not seeing any questions. I think this is also going to consent on December 3rd. Any questions, concerns? Great, we will see this item there. Thank you, Chief Lowe, and welcome again. We have another item, 2025 Rate Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement between the City of Redmond and the South Correctional Entity, SCORE. Pass it over to you.
Yep, so again, this is a renewal of our annual contract with SCORE. SCORE is the facility that provides us custodial services for jail. That's for our beds. Very briefly, we had explored the potential option of going with Kirkland for jail services, but due to logistical reasons for video court and space reasons for public defender access, we're unable to move forward with that at this time. We will stay in talks with Kirkland, and if it becomes a feasibility for us to potentially utilize them, we will explore that in the future. And I'm open for any questions.
Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thank you. Couple of times we've seen this, we've gotten the average number of beds needed per night, and I don't see that in the documentation this time. I looked back in 2020, it was 15 beds, and this is requesting 20 beds, and I'm pretty sure we dropped it in the years in between. So can you just, do you have that information? Can you provide that information of how many average beds per night we've used?
Deputy Chief, do you have it? If not, I can talk through it. So this number has vacillated over the years for a variety of reasons. If we book or if we contract for the 20 beds, we actually have the bed space available in years prior, and as we've seen in this last contract with them, we've contracted for far fewer beds than what we need, and it costs us a premium when we don't have the contracted bed. So it's actually much more expensive to do less beds than it is to have more. So that's why it's gone back up to 20, I believe. At one point, we went down to as low as 12 beds, but that's the real difference, or that's the fiscal reason for the difference.
So I guess I'll just state for the record that I would love to see a study on this, maybe next year for the work plan, because it has vacillated a lot. I'd love to see the difference in if we lower the number, how much more we're paying over the year, and just trying to hit that number right on. So just interested in some more deep dive on that work.
Okay, noted.
Thank you, and we'll work to get that study. Any other questions? Perfect, seeing none. This is also requested for the December 3rd consent agenda. Any questions, concerns? Great, we will see this there. Next item is the Interlocal Agreement between King County and the City of Redmond and 2025 Detention Rates for Inmate Housing at King County Jail Facilities. I'll pass it to you, Chief Lowe.
Similarly, much like the SCORE, this is our contract with the county for bed space at the main jail facility that is run by King County, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from Council? Perfect, seeing none. This is also going to be seen at the December 3rd consent agenda. Any concerns with that? Perfect, we will see this item there. And now, we have the Lake Washington School District, 2024-2025 School Community Resource Officer Contract Agreement with Chief Lowe.
All right, so this is the renewal of the contract between us and the school district for the Community Resource Officer Program, i.e. the School Resource Officer Program. It also includes the operating procedures. When we first brought this forward, there was a question from Council Member Noeva Kamina, specific to, I believe it was section number three regarding potential additional employment or off-duty employment by officers for things such as coaching, and that was addressed and clarified in this version that's been brought before you guys. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions, and if I recall correctly, I believe we're finalizing a joint meeting between our council and the school board upcoming, if I recall correctly.
Thank you, Chief Lowe, and thank you, Council Member Noeva Kamina. Any questions from Council? Council President Kritzer?
I'll just note that I think, as we've discussed, I think every year when we see this contract, that I will definitely look forward to our discussion with Lake Washington School Board about this topic in addition to others, but I think being able to understand from their perspective the path forward on this program across the school district and to be able to share more from what we're hearing from our community and continue to assess, especially as we've moved to this floating model where we get, would love, you know, as either Chief Lowe or the school district have more data about, kind of feedback on this current model, and also the responses. I always appreciate being able to look at that data to assess the needs and effectiveness of this program. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, this is also going to be on consent on December 3rd. Any concerns with that? Great, we will see this item there, and thank you, Chief Lowe, for joining us virtually. Perfect, our next item is the Acceptance of the Department of Commerce Energy Audit Grant to Inform Energy Updates at the Public Safety Building in the Amount of $26,500, and we have Sustainability Program Manager Jenny Leibek.
Good evening, Council. So Redmond has been conditionally awarded a $26,500 grant from the Department of Commerce, and this will partially fund an energy audit at the Public Safety Building. So work completed under this grant will inform energy improvements at the Public Safety Building and support compliance with the Clean Buildings Performance Standard. And so today, I'm just requesting that this item be added to the consent agenda at the December 3rd council meeting. I can open up to any questions.
Thank you. Questions from Council? Council President Kritzer?
I'll just make a comment, and I'm excited to see this. Thanks for the work to get this grant and hopefully to have even cleaner buildings in our city.
Perfect, any other questions? Seeing none, this item is for consent on December 3rd. Any concerns? Great, we will see you there. Thank you for less than a minute. Our next, oh yeah, our next item is also with Sustainability Program Manager Jenny Leibek, an Approval of Consultant Services Agreement with the Olympia Community Solar in the Amount of $87,500 for an East Side Climate Partnership Solarize Campaign.
Great, and again, as the title notes, so this is to support a regional solarize campaign in 2025. So Solarize is a nonprofit-sponsored group purchasing model that helps reduce costs and ultimately simplify the solar installation process for community members. And so the contract before you today is with the nonprofit organization Olympia Community Solar. So they will host two workshops in each city. They'll facilitate group contracting rates for our community members, and they'll provide technical support for community members to go solar. So expenses will be split, that $87,000 will be split between the five participating cities, and Redmond's cost will be $17,500. That differs just a little bit with what was in the memo, just because we were waiting for a city to confirm, but our final, I'll update that in the final that goes to you, hopefully on December 3rd. But in general, this is just an example of our shared contracting work that we do through the East Side Climate Partnership. And again, the goal there is just to reduce administrative burdens for regional programs that benefit all of our communities. And again, this is also requesting consent at the December 3rd council meeting.
Thank you. Questions from Council? Council Member Stewart?
Thank you so much, Ms. Leibek. This is thrilling, how exciting. Could you say a little bit more about the residents and homeowners that are going to be most applicable for this program? In prior programs, some of them have had like income limits and other things like that. Is there anything other than just being a homeowner in Redmond that, or one of the five cities, that would qualify you for this program?
Yeah, being a homeowner, being in one of the five cities, this program will be available in other cities too. I think Shoreline and Kenmore are also looking at this approach, and ultimately, we're just trying to maximize the folks taking advantage of the federal tax credits that are now available. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council President Kritzer?
If it turns out that we have a lot of success with this, but we find that there's more demand than we're able to meet with what's contracted, do you anticipate that we could extend this contract, or do you have kind of plans for that in the long run?
Yeah, we had anticipated this being kind of a pilot for this year. We are doing just some general electrification, kind of, we're trying to evaluate which incentive programs we want to continue or we want to expand to in the future as the Energy Smart East Side Program, right, our regional home electrification program. So we're doing this as kind of a pilot, and there could be opportunities for us to expand or just continue to do another solarize campaign in partnership with Olympia Community Solar.
I'll look forward to seeing this roll out and also the metrics as we chart its success.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Great, we, any objections to seeing this on December 3rd consent agenda? Seeing none, we will see this item there. Thank you. We have three items left, and we've been zooming through the agenda. The last two items, I was told, are going to be read only, so if you have questions, feel free to send emails and/or if, when we get to the items, I'll read them out. If there are questions, we can address them here with time that we have. But our third to last agenda item is a Council Policy Proposal and Resolution with COO Alyssa Files.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Before you, this afternoon is a proposed resolution to clarify a process for temporary right-of-way use, particularly for protective measures to keep vehicles from driving through buildings with the intent to cause harm. This resolution came forward as a council hopper item. The attached memo has a redlined resolution outlining recommended changes to the proposed resolution, namely that the city already has a process to allow permitted temporary right-of-way use, and the use is governed under the Redmond Municipal Code, Chapter 12. Since the city already has a process, the redlined version proposes and recommends improving the process rather than creating a new process. Other changes include taking into account the uniqueness of various locations in the city, as well as other considerations that are outlined in the memo. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, Council, any questions? Council Member Anderson?
Thank you, and I appreciate the follow-up on this item. The comment I would like to add or just clarify, when you presented, you mentioned the intent to cause harm. As far as I'm concerned, a vehicle driving into a building does cause harm, so is the intent important in this case?
I believe that the hopper item had mentioned stolen vehicles that were used to commit a crime, basically, and rather than vehicles where somebody mistakes the accelerator for the brake and goes through a building.
Thanks.
Other questions from Council? Council Member Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. Thank you, COO Files, for joining us. My question is more about, I've got concern about resolutions for specific instances, and this seems like it's for a specific instance, and that's not to say that it shouldn't be addressed, but I'm not sure if this is the proper way or the way that we should be doing a resol, having a resolution for a specific item. Do we know how, what other areas have we had resolutions for a specific, because my concern is that getting so prescriptive inside of something for one, for a particular incident? I mean, it's been multiple incidents, so it's definitely something that needs to be addressed, but is this the way that we should be using a resolution, is my question?
And maybe that, maybe that's the wrong question to ask you, so maybe it's more of, do we have instances where we've had a resolution for specific events?
Off the top of my head, I can't recall, but certainly I could get that information for you. I would need to go back and research a bit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thanks. So I'm good with a lot of the red lines, especially everything on page one. I have some concerns on, I think it's page three, that I would love to talk out maybe offline and provide an alternate for this. I guess my main concern, though, is the framing in the memo still centers everything around a car-centric response, and our downtown area and the areas where bollards would be placed and improvements and improving the process, which this, the core of this is to just improve the permitting process, is all about walkability and safety. So I'm struggling quite a bit with the fact that the framing of it, when it was brought back, centers around vehicles and cars and puts cars before people. So I think, just kind of sharing where I'm at right now, I do want to see us move on this by the end of the year, so I'm, I would propose we get this on the December 3rd meeting for new business, and then if I do have alternate language, I would just, I would just submit version B, so.
Other questions? Council President Kritzer?
This is a little more technical, but on the, on all the whereas that have to do with the community strategic plan, I think before we would adopt this, I'd want to check because I think we do use numbers in the community strategic plan, but the whereas make it seem like public safety is our number one objective, when I don't know if actually of the pillars in the community strategic plan, like we actually agreed those were the prioritized order, or whether it was just number one, number two, number three in terms of a list. And this makes it seem like these things are, one, that this bucket in the community strategic plan is our number one thing, because I don't know if we ranked it housing versus DEI versus public safety. It might be, but I just don't know if we've had that conversation, so we might just reword it a little bit, as well as underneath the, each of those pillars. Yeah, I think when we approved that, I saw it more as a list and not necessarily as a ranking. So either we could reword this just to make it, because I think we clearly do outline these things in our community strategic plans, so I don't take issue with it, it's just more a rewording that I caught kind of last minute on this that I think we might want to update before we would, if we were to adopt this.
Great, Council Vice President Forsythe?
And to that point, I think it would be interesting if we pulled in some of like the Transportation Master Plan and some of the other plans as well, so I think there is some warehouses that we could finesse, and I think you might be right, I think they might be bullets, and it was just referencing bullet number one, bullet number three, that sort of thing. So, thanks, good catch.
Council President Kritzer?
And I would say overall, I mean, in terms of the importance of And I would say overall, I mean, in terms of the importance of safety for the public in the right-of-way, that Division Zero covers a lot of that as well, so.
Thank you. Anything else from your side, COO Files?
No, just clarity on when you want this brought back and kind of process and next steps from here would be great.
Thoughts on that, council? When would we like to see this? Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thank you. When would, what is, given the holiday next week, what is the deadline for submitting for the packet for the third?
Cheryl, can you clarify that?
Preferably Monday, end of day Tuesday.
Okay. Okay.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. What I might offer, because there have been some questions around whether the resolution is the right tool for the solve, I might offer for the chair, it's helpful to get four thumbs that we'd like to move forward to seeing a new version, and then if so, establishing how that version could be brought forward, given the limited timeline that we have left. So those are just a couple of thoughts.
All right, thank you. That sounds great. Thumbs on whether or not we'd like to see a new version? Seeing two, three, four. Perfect, that's four thumbs. We would like to see a new version. And I know that December 3rd is a tight timeline. Not really a ton of options. So I'm thinking that we can try to push for that if that works.
Sure, I'll work with council leadership on that.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you for bringing this back with all the work that you've done.
Of course.
Great. So we'll aim to see that on the third, but council leadership can update council on if there's any other updates there. So we have two items left, which are both read-only items. We have the Fire Save Loss, Save Versus Loss for Q3 of 2024. And I'll pause here just to see if there are any questions immediately. If not, since this is read-only, we can move past this to the final item. Great, seeing, oh, yeah, Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thought you got away with it. I would, I'm sorry, I am just catching up on this one. On the permanent supportive housing, I see that there are 14 folks currently residing. I would, I'm curious if Director Helen could, or is Seraphine still here? Could let us know what the plan is for the winter as far as getting people inside? Just kind of a quick public share of the winter plans, since we have some time.
Great, so for the second-to-last item, for the Fire Save the Loss for Q3, it looks like there was no questions for the listening public. The presentation provides a summary of fire incidents and an overview of fires investigated during the third quarter of 2024. So council had no questions on that. The final item is a Permanent Supportive Housing Quarterly Update, and Council Vice President Forsythe asked a question of Director Helen. So if Director Helen is able to join, we would appreciate that.
Deputy Director Allen is also on her way down because they received the most recent update on that. But if you have any questions about the permanent supportive housing update, I am happy to answer them while we wait for Seraphine to arrive.
Thank you. And just for the listening public, the two items on this update are the Redmond Health Through Housing, Haven Heights, and Plymouth Housing. I saw Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. While we take a moment here, thanks for the update. Very much appreciated. And I really love this new quarterly reporting schedule that we're in, and the report is very clear. One of my requests for, I guess, first quarter would be great to get an update on, since the council's investment at Capella and how the additional case management is going there and how the resources of that. That's not really our permanent supportive housing program, but would be nice to hear back on that.
That'd be great. We are actually in the process of working out cadence for kind of broader, like step housing. So, which refers to shelter, transitional emergency, and permanent supportive housing. So we can certainly try to work out that kind of reporting structure for Q1 of next year. We do have some information to report from the Capella pilot that we do want to share with you. So we will do that after the recess.
Thank you. And Deputy Director Allen has joined us as well. So maybe we can address Council Vice President Forsythe's question, and then Council President Kritzer?
Just to repeat the question I heard upstairs, it was what the plan is for the winter with, alongside those 14 residents?
So the permanent supportive housing, or I'm sorry, the Health Through Housing project. And, you know, last year, we were really hoping to get people inside for winter. What's that look like for this year?
So they are going to get up to 15 residents total, and then they're going to be starting their reconstruction of a certain number of units. And they will be coming, as Director Helen, I think, mentioned, in January to provide their six-month report of the residents they have now. And we are hopeful that they will be able to provide a more concrete timeline for the transition of those units to accept the additional 85 residents.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer?
A quick question on the Plymouth project. I see that they have formed the Community Advisory Group. Is it possible to get a list of the members of that group?
Sure, we can send that to you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, since this is read-only, if you have any other questions, feel free to send an email to the team. Thank you. We have now reached the end of today's agenda. Twelve, yeah, 12 items in less than 40 minutes. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we are adjourned.